Action item B, we have consideration and possible action on the issuance of a temporary moor and float raft and dock permit for Nathan Marcucci of 2288 Clark Road Extension. Action item C, consideration and possible action on the issuance of a one-day liquor license to Altrus Brewing Company. Action item D, we have consideration and possible action on the issuance of a one-day liquor license for Altrus Brewing Company for Concerts on the Common. Action item E, we have consideration and possible action to update the one-day liquor license issued to Greater Good Imperial Brewing Co. for the town bonfire. Action item F, consideration and possible action to appointment Sandra Gibson Quigley to the 250th Anniversary Committee. Action item G, consideration and possible action to accept a $5,000 donation from Robert Benaric for the Senior Center. Action item H, consideration and possible action on the acceptance of a donation to the Fire Department of a used Sony television set. Then we'll have old business, new business, correspondence, approval limits, Citizens Forum, and then we will adjourn. So if we could start tonight with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, if we could have a moment of silence for all the senseless violence going on around the world.
For Pope Francis.
And Pope Francis, passing. Public service announcements. Mary Lou, do you have any?
Just to remind everybody that the town bonfire is Saturday, October, April 26th, but with the forecast, it looks like it's probably going to be on the 27th.
Mary, do you have?
I just want to thank people for voting, and I'm very happy to be back here representing the Sturbridge residents. And we didn't get to wish everybody a happy and blessed Easter, so I hope it was for everybody.
Yes, and just congratulations on the election. Next up, we'll have a public hearing, Raps Scallion at Pine Lakes. Do we have to wait till 6:45, or can we?
You know what, it's listed, what time is it listed for, 6:45? Yeah, so we can go on to some other.
Do you want to do your?
Sure, I'll give a little update and we'll roll from there, and then at 6:45, we'll officially bring you up. I'll do a quick update, I did not do a weekly memo, I will get you one. Obviously, we've been hustling along with town meeting. Very quickly, on my end, I will be starting to go over to the Senior Center, probably once every two to three Tuesday mornings, I'm going to just set it up, just a chance to talk to people, a little bit of time to get out. We see a lot more people in between exercise classes and whatnot because of the layout of the Senior Center, just kind of hanging out, having coffee. So I'm just going to do sort of a coffee hour every couple weeks. So for anybody listening, it's just free-for-all question and answer, anything they have concerns about, anything people want to ask about in the Senior Center. Just give a chance for the seniors who might not be as inclined to be on social media and the internet, a chance to ask questions and be engaged. So I started that this morning, and then I'll set up a schedule, and Leslie will put something out in the newsletter. Speaking of Senior Center, May 6th, Tuesday, May 6th, is going to be the open house at 4 o'clock. The elevator is up and running and working. There will be another shutdown of that elevator sometime in August or September for the final portion of the modernization, but it did pass inspection, and we are very happy. So there'll be a flag raising and a very small ceremony on May 6th to celebrate that. I met with Al Menard, the head of our Cable Commission. He is actively working with Spectrum on negotiating. We're moving along, they're looking at all sorts of things. He's really looking at the length of the commitment that we get into, given the changing nature of technology. So that's really important to that committee, and they're doing great work. Cedar Lake construction has started, again, people, if you see somebody out at Cedar Lake, this is the accessibility project. There is no increase in recreational services there, we are not moving on to 60-seater or anything else, this is handicapped accessible parking lots, upgrade and playground equipment, port and play, new footings, and access to the beach where a wheelchair could get to the beach. But there's been a lot of question of are we increasing recreational services there, and I know it's a very sensitive area, but no, this is just fixing what we have and making it more accessible to all.
And long overdue, I might add, for the handicapped accessible.
Yeah, there's really nowhere.
I don't think we'll get pushback on that.
No, there's really nowhere safe to park like a handicapped van there right now, there's no designated area, and that will all change. And then again, there'll be equipment on the playground that will be accessible to all kids.
Good.
I'm working with our Insurance Advisory Commission, which is a group of labor leadership. We're looking at some plan design changes potentially, just to save the town and the employees money. As you know, from the budget, we're scheduled to go up 9.9% next year, which was the lowest increase that Maya had for any community, but it's still 9.9%. That means our town payment goes up, 70% goes up, 9.9%. But also, the employees who are paying 30% of that are going up. So if you live here and you work here, you're kind of getting it on the taxpayer and in on the employee end. So we're looking at some plan design changes, we had a very healthy discussion with our union. It's not a subject of actual contract negotiation, but it is a subject of impact bargaining. So positive discussions on that. And then, also, I met with representatives from the Wister, Greater Worcester Chamber, which is part of the consortium that the Central South Chamber is, which we are. The Chamber is still alive, there's been a lot of discussion on that. The particular person who is running the Chamber is no longer there, but we have representations, and I think we mentioned this when we talked about keeping the Harvest Fest, so that, things are still looking relatively positive there. She actually has somebody who has reached out to run the Harvest Fest, Andrew St. George is working with them to do a combination of like a Brew Fest and a Harvest Fest and have some type of fall event. So there is life there, and the Chamber is still active, so that was good news to hear. As far as the bonfire, I just want to let people know, the lighting project on the Commons will be in its final phases, so there might be some parking restrictions, and for people just to be aware, we tried to get it done ahead of everything, but with winter sitting a little late this year, and, you know, February basically just having frozen ground right through into March, we got a little bit delayed, yet it was not exactly an ideal weather winter to be doing outdoor trenching. We did, just for everybody's comfort, we had the tree warden meet with the contractor to make sure that any of the trenching would not damage the trees on the Common. We do have a couple astreets there that we're struggling to save, but as far as the trenching, this will all be fine. So those are my updates there, and then I don't know if you want to have Shane go in on the public hearing?
Yeah, that sounds good. Shane, why don't you come up?
Evening, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
I turned in reports, operating reports for both February and March. Start with any questions you might have on those.
Shane, I don't necessarily have any questions on the report, just how are our water levels right now?
Good. I was actually looking at the frame gauges today, you know, with all the rain you've had, they're pretty high.
Good, good, good. Do you have any other questions on the report?
I don't have any other questions, but congratulations on your award that you're getting.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, I found that should have been on my list, and of course, Shane.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and thank you to the board, Town Administrator Heather Blakely, and all the people at the DPW, because they, you know, they work for us all the time, and without that support, this doesn't happen.
I was very impressed.
Yeah, and just for the people at home, Shane, you want to explain what the award is?
Yeah, so every year, the Mass D E P picks certain water systems to receive awards in different categories for compliance in the year before. So we were chosen last year for the Conservation Award, that basically means our unaccounted floor is under 10%, and our resident potato caper is under 65.
That's great.
So, and that's part of our permit, so it's been that way for quite a while.
Great, that's awesome, congratulations.
Other things we have going on, relining the sewer pipe on Route 20, I don't know if you saw him out there last night, they did Burge School Road on Friday, they'll be out there the rest of this week, and hopefully wrap that project up. So it's been a long time coming, took a long time going through the Mass DOT stuff, but that pipe was in rough shape, so by investing this money, now you get another 50 years out of that pipe, which is a good thing, so happy to see that moving along. We're into the filter work at the water plant, we have the first one out, it required some additional welding. The tanks, at least the first one, doesn't appear to be in that bad condition. Once they do the welding, the inspector will give us a time limit on how much longer you can inspect out of those filters. I mean, they're 43 years old, right? So, but from what I saw and what they've said, it's looking pretty good, we'll just have to wait for the official report. Then we'll have to wait to get into the other two filters, which probably won't happen until sometime this fall, so we'll keep you updated as we go through that project. We did another round of flushing, that's completed, and we checked all the fire hydrants, make sure they're all operating like we do every year, and so they'll stay like that until we go back and winterize them in the fall. Still waiting on the sanitary survey report from Mass D E P for the water system. I think that's going to have some action items on water tanks and paintings and things of that nature. I've been going back and forth with them, they say this, we push back, we push back, so once I have that report, we'll share those findings with you also, because there will be some budget implications in there also. And like you said, the water levels are back, we would be going in water band, season starts May 1st, as of today, it doesn't look like we're going to go into it, but what happens is when they open the Westfield Dam, the level drops like that, and we end up in a water band, so we'll just keep an eye on that and go in when we have to.
Good.
That's basically all I have for you this evening.
Great.
I just had a quick question. It's been a number of months since we've had any requests for abatements for water and sewer, which is really fabulous. I'm just wondering, that list that we keep of addresses that are, you know, using it in order in amount, is that list down lately?
I don't know what's down, I know it goes up every month, I know there are, I believe, two abatements requests that'll be coming.
I thought you had that expression, I thought, this is wonderful.
Likely we'll have two coming up, yeah.
And the list is there, I'll be honest with you, when people call and complain about their bill, nine times out of 10, the first thing I do is bring up the list, and they don't even know it exists.
Well, we already put it.
We put it on the bill, we put it everywhere, yes.
We haven't notified people, it's just.
It continues to be on all the bills, right? Or is it only on that first bill?
Is it still on the bill?
I don't see the bills, I thought it was on the first.
Or it's not, it must be on the, still on the bill, I thought it was still printed on the bottom of the bill, I think it's still printed on it, yeah.
I think, I'm on town services, I thought it was.
Yeah, I thought it was just automatically.
The first time, we actually gave like an insert.
Yes, and then.
But then I thought it was on the bill, maybe we can make sure it is.
I think it's still on the bill, it was originally, but I think we kept it on there. I could put another notice out on social media, too, just reminding people.
So, I guess I spoke too soon.
Well, this, yeah, and this, these abatements weren't necessarily generated, the list did not trigger.
No, these abatements are going to come from, I believe, the third quarter of last year.
Yeah, they're actually, one of the reasons they're going to go to you without, with passing through Barbara and Heather and me, that first go-around, is because they're past, I believe both of them are past the actual timeframe, the regulation timeframe to.
To do the abatement, okay.
Yeah, you have to file, by the bylaws, you have to file within 30 days of the bill being issued, and that way you pass that, so I think that's why it's coming to you next.
Right, so we automatically won't look at it at that point unless there was something drastic that we felt was, but even then, I think typically if it's past the required, it automatically comes your way, because it's a violation of the.
Yeah, I mean, the good thing is, with the list, when it comes out, the first thing I do is look at the list, and if you're on the list, and that's an indication you got a problem, and then, you know, we still go out and off the data logging process if they want to get into that, so. And honestly, we have a meeting on water meters next week, I didn't want to get into it tonight because I didn't have all the information, but you're probably going to have to do another upgrade of your water meters soon, and then you can go to some more advanced technology where if someone has a water leak in their house, which we've talked about before, you can get a text message or an email saying, the water's running for 24 hours straight, and talking to the meter reps, other towns that have gone to that technology don't even offer abatements, because you have the ability to monitor your own usage.
Right.
And if you're not willing to do that, well then that's on you.
That's right.
That's right.
So the next time you come in, you'll have a little more info on that?
We have a meeting next week.
Yeah.
It's not cheap.
Yeah.
And it's just a matter of, are we ready to do it now, or do we put it off for a few years, so that's a conversation we have to have internally first.
Cool.
And then when we're ready, we'll come back to you guys.
Okay, that's perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
You, too, Shane.
All right. Next up, we're ready for the public hearing. Mary, do you want to read it, or do you want me to?
I don't know where it is.
Yeah, I'll read it.
Oh, there it is, okay, go ahead.
Okay, April 8th, April 25th, we're going to do a notification, it's hereby given that the application has been filed for Raps Scallion at Pine Lake for a new on-premise seasonal liquor license at Pine Lake RV Resort for a Common Vic license, beer and wine at the premises, currently located at 30 River Road. With the Sturbridge Select Board in accordance with MGL CH 138, a public hearing will be held April 22nd, 2025, at 6:45 PM. This hearing will be held at Veterans Memorial Hall, Sturbridge Town Hall, 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass. Legal notices will run in the Southbridge News on April 10th, 2025. So, opening the public hearing. Is it? Okay, all right.
Motion to.
Oh, motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right. How's it going, guys? You want to tell us a little bit about the plan and?
Sure. As per the application, we are looking to start a seasonal taproom at Pine Lake, our here representing Pine Lake, at one of his buildings.
Great.
Process.
Right, and would it be open seven days a week, or?
We're, I think we're, our application's seven days a week, but, yep, 12 to 10 here, but beginning, I think we're going to start slow and do it for Wednesdays and Sundays.
Great.
Sort of see where the demand is.
Wednesday through Sunday, you said?
Yeah.
I believe all the departments signed off on this.
Do we have any questions for the applicant?
No, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, me too, I think you do great. Mary, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. Do you still, do you rent out your space for, like, parties, birthday parties? No?
Not generally, we've tried that, but it kind of gets out of control.
Okay.
And the people are bringing outside people in, and we just don't have parking for that, so.
Yep.
We've got this one building that's been sitting there dormant, and people like to drink, you know.
Right.
We're going to sign it, came with his brewery and keep them their own property.
Yeah, they're not driving around, at least.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, that makes sense, I was just curious, because when I got a tour of that, when it reopened, it's a beautiful spot now, so.
We tried renting out for weddings and whatnot, but.
Yeah, you got to do it fast.
Chaos and stuff like that, and I got a ton of clock curfew, and I'm strict with it, you know, and if we're going to keep this park going the way it is, we got to maintain our strength on, in the hours or whatnot. Renting the buildings didn't work out for me.
Yes, I understand.
Live and learn.
Live and learn.
So you're going to set up like a nice bar, like, similar to what you have right now? I mean, I'm just curious.
It's going to be similar to our taproom in Spencer.
Okay.
So we have a little brewery in Spencer, and then next to the brewery in the same building, we have, very small.
And you'll have all your tip servers and all that, your tip certified people, yeah.
We're really going to take some of our Spencer staff and just rotate them here, so they're all tip certified and state served, and beer and wine, really a one-person operation, all of us operate, and Archie's building's already state-of-the-art, brand-new, so we don't have to do much to comply with Ken, we're out, building inspector and fire, once it's all done, they'll come in and be pretty quick.
Yes, no, I think it's a great idea. Did you already go through the other channels that you need to go through? Are we the last stop or the first stop?
You're in the middle.
Okay.
Everybody's signed off, right? Yeah, but it did get sign-offs.
Well, that's what I was going to say, because does a motion have to say, subject to approval by the Board of Health, or are we good just?
No, I think Ken has already signed, did Ken, was Ken on the sign-off list?
Ken was also with it, too.
Yeah.
So we want to file a pledge for the liquor license, so that's why we're meeting Ken.
Yeah, because we have to get the liquor license in, but that, he's still eventually going to have to get food sign, if there's food service, which is going to be, they'll have a final sign-off.
Well, we have been in talks with Ken, and we're stainless, needs to be stainless, and, you know, it's already a kitchen, we're doing.
Are you going to plan on serving food from there in the future?
We're just going to do like our brewery taproom in Spencer, flatbreads, a little oven.
Okay.
And not pretty much of pretzels.
Okay.
But mainly, so I do have a food program there now that's right in the same area.
Oh, okay.
So we're going to team up with them, and we're going to serve our food, through alcohol, partnership.
Oh, nice, oh, you have a, you have like a little restaurant?
I got my own kitchen down here that we, the smokers and whatnot on, yeah.
Nice, that sounds like good.
Yeah, good time.
Yeah.
Any other questions, or? All right, I have none, it is a public hearing, does anybody have any questions from the audience on this? All right, hearing none, motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, and then do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Good luck.
Yeah.
Next up, we're on the action items, we have consideration and possible action on the issuance of a temporary moor and float raft and dock permit for 2025 to Judith Ross of 288A Clark Road Extension.
So let me give a little bit of background on this for the first two that are here tonight. As you know, last year, we became aware that there was, there's a policy on the books that every year, temporary docks need to come in front of the board, and we decided that for one round, we would review each of them, and then after that, subsequently, if there were no changes, next year, anybody who came forward with plans this year, provided they had no changes, it would just be a sign-off, so we don't make people come every year to do the same thing over and over. We put word out there, not a lot of people have come forward to follow the process appropriately, but we have some people beginning to follow the process appropriately, and we are working, because we still have the right to enforce, I mean, we will do our best to enforce so that people do come in and start to comply with this process. The reason I want to speak a little bit before both of these is I want to be clear, because you'll see 288 and 288A, they are neighbors, there is a strip of land in between that has different ownership, that strip of land is not in discussion tonight, that had a separate stairway, I believe, that was simply a conservation issue. If you recall, when we last talked about the temporary policy, because there was discussion on, should we be looking at the state, at the permanent docks here, the state law does not allow you to look at the permanent docks, but what we did add to the policy was that we wanted to ensure the conservation looked at the first 25 feet of any of these, 25, right? Because that's what's within conservation's purview. So to get this process going, this is really the first time we're doing this now officially, we had Lauren's sign-off and approval generally on the 25 feet, the first 25 feet, and she took a look at the distance between the two docks, because they are neighboring properties, and indicated that there was no concern from the conservation and for either of these docks. So I just wanted to be clear, because it's 88 and 88A, it looks like it could be on top, but there's actually a strip of property that neither one of these parties owns, you know.
10 feet.
10 feet, so in between, so, right, but overall, it's 10. So just wanted to give you some background on the properties, conservation has signed off on her 25 feet, and then the rest now is up to the board, whether the board is comfortable with the provisions of these docks.
Okay, all right, great. Do you have any questions on the proposed dock?
I don't have any questions on it.
Mary, you?
No, I think, I also don't.
And conservation's all set, we just sign off, cool, all right.
We have the existing conditions documented, you know, we're running to see now what is there.
Awesome, sounds good.
Yeah, that would have just been my only, you know, condition that conservation signed off, so, yep, I don't see.
What did you say? Can we read this?
Yeah, if you want to come up to the mic and just say that, people at home can hear.
So I visited both sites, I'm sorry, Lauren Bivier Conservation Agent, I visited both sites just to confirm the existing conditions, to take a picture of the landing, so it's documented of what is there, they both have permanent landings to put their temporary docks to secure those, it does not look like either of them have any changes, so that would be the thing that I would be looking for, is if there's any changes that have to be made to the land specifically with, I mean, within the 200 is our jurisdiction, but within that 25-foot, Conservation Commission has the right to deny any request for disturbance within the 25. So if they were looking to change anything, add a landing, fix a landing, add stairs, walkway, anything like that, has to go before conservation. Both of these applications within their existing condition are in fair shape, I don't anticipate any changes this year, so we now have on record of what is there for those two, we hope the others follow suit.
So if next year, they do the exact same dock on the exact same landing, all they have to do is fill out a form and say same as last year, and they're on record as having come forward.
They don't have to come here.
They do not have to come again.
That's a nice thing, right?
Right, it's easy, but we're trying to, the reality is, we are trying to get a handle on all of the temporary docks, and it's like herding cats.
But can you put stairs or something going into the water, change?
Yes.
Okay.
Any change from what literally gets approved tonight, the landing and the dock, the permanent base and the dock.
Okay, great, with that, I will do a motion to approve the issuance of a dock permit for Judith Ross of 288A Clark Road Extension.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor? Good luck, have fun.
We know it, we know the nice weather is here when we start getting these, so.
It's a nice sign.
Joyous day.
Happy thing, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Enjoy.
Yeah, we will.
Of course, they will.
Yep. Next up, action item B, consideration and possible action on the issuance of temporary moor and float raft and dock permit for 2025 to Nathan Marcucci of 288 Clark Road Extension.
Same situation.
Same situation, I'm assuming you're, you know, Lauren and everything, you're all set. All right, do we have any questions?
No.
All right. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a dock permit for 2025 to Nathan Marcucci of 288 Clark Road Extension.
Second.
You have a motion, a second, all those in favor? Enjoy.
Thanks, Mr. Marcucci.
All right. Action item C, consideration and possible action on the issuance of a one-day liquor license to Altrus Brewing Company for the town bonfire on April 26th, 2025, with a rain date of April 27th, 2025. So this is the, Altrus has done the bonfire before in the past.
Yeah, they were invited to come, but we don't have any, we had no concerns, it got signed off on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, okay. I will make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license to Altrus Brewing Company for the town bonfire on April 26th, 2025, with a rain date of April 27th, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
2-0-1, Francis, I'm going to abstain, I still have concerns with, and I did look it up, it's fine, that's the majority of the quorum.
Yes.
I just, town-owned property and issuing liquor licenses, I assume our insurance knows we do that, and, yeah, because, I mean, you can't.
Yeah, they're aware.
Contract out of it, but somebody drinks too much, we've, it's on our land, and I'm Contract out of it, but somebody drinks too much. We've, it's on our land and I'm just not comfortable with it. So, so it's a two zero one on that.
Next, uh, action item D, consideration and possible action on the issuance of a one-day liquor license to Altrus Brewing Company for the concerts on the common June 12th, 19th, 26th, July 3rd, 10th, 24th, 31st, August 7th, 14th, and 21st of 2025. And the only question that I had is, at what point, Robin, do they, they have plenty of one-day liquor license that they're able to use?
Thirty, that you have up to 30 one-day licenses a year.
In there.
They should be well within there.
Obviously, with what they do there under that. Okay.
Yep.
Do I have a motion to approve or?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second that. All those in favor?
I'll see it again. I just have a question. So when they come, um, do they wear a wristband so that people only get two beers or a limit on the beers? Or like, how does that work?
I don't know how they've done it. I'm not sure how they've done it.
You know what I mean?
Is a limitation. I mean, we haven't, the police chief hasn't asked for any.
No, I know. I just sometimes it's self-imposed by the.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Okay. Yeah. Cause I mean, I, I still, I know we do it a lot now, but like when I Google, it says issuing liquor licenses on town-owned land carries the risk of liability for the town primarily related to the potential for drunk driving accidents or injuries caused by intoxicated patrons. The town could be held liable under civil law if negligently, if it negligently failed to prevent harm caused by intoxicated individuals. So I don't know for a future meeting, if we ever want, wanted to, because I know I'm in the minority on this, but if we ever wanted to issue the liquor license subject to them limiting the amount that they serve any one person for these bonfires and whatnot.
But if they're all tip certified, they're supposed to control how much they serve to each person.
I understand, but usually tip, that, and we always require that when we offer ish, liquor licenses on their property. But now we've got like an added liability because it's our land too, that's all. And so I don't think it would be unreasonable if the town also imposed its own requirement, it's just me, on the amount of liquor that we allow on town-owned property. Um, so I'm just putting it out there for future thought, you know, I'm not saying anybody has to agree with it, but, um, so anyways, moving on, moving on, because those were voted in, so.
Okay, so we got voted on.
Yeah, that's a two zero one vote. That's fine.
Okay.
Yep. And next up, action item E, consideration and possible action on the update to the one-day liquor license issued to the Greater Good Imperial Brew Co. for a town bonfire of April 26, 2025, to include a rain date of April 27, 2025. Um, I'll make a motion to approve action item E if there are no questions from the board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Sorry.
The extension.
I'm staying.
Yep.
Two zero one.
Um, you know, I would actually like to know, I, I would just like to know how busy they are, Robin. I mean, I, it's not really how busy, but the, next time in the talk, if you could give an update, like, is it well received? Because I mean, we want our residents to have a good time and.
Oh, how busy what the bonfire is?
No, 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 no. The, 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 the one-day liquor license is at these events. Are they, are they really busy? I mean.
Yeah, I'll find out. I think they do pretty well.
I would assume they are, only because every year they would have come back.
Right, and they wouldn't come back.
I'm thinking if they're doing six or seven days.
Too, because like if someone, you know.
Great business.
Yeah, tries it, they like it, then next thing, you know, you're Yankees and.
Yeah, no, it's good. Anytime anybody's in an event like that, it's good business. But, um, and it's certain, and you know, the breweries are limited on what it is that they're selling as well. So it's not like a hard alcohol pour, or if it's a distillery, it might be, but there, it's not like a restaurant moving their bar out there. Like for instance, what Rapsgallion's doing is a little different.
Right.
But these are, because of the type of licenses that they have, they're not doing mixed drinks or, yeah. So there's.
I mean, no, I love our breweries. I go to Altrus, um.
So I like it. It's a little restricted.
And I love Rapsgallion. I just, when it's town-owned property, I have like other concerns.
And I, 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 no, I, I understand fully, but I think for the, um, on the more of the, uh, that sort of the retail aspect of it as opposed to the legal, I think that the type of alcohol it's being served sort of fits the events. It's, you know.
Yeah.
Not that different people don't have different tastes that they drink no matter where they are at, but it's beer or a distillery or something like that seems to fit. It's more sort of natural kind of a feel. But I guess they do pretty well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. Action item M, consideration and possible action to appoint Sandra Gibson Quigley to the 250th Anniversary Committee.
Yep, so she's actually popped into a couple of their meetings and given obviously her extensive background on Sturbridge Tourism and everything else, it just is a natural fit that she would be on there. Very helpful to us.
She's a great asset.
Yeah, I think she'd be huge for us.
Any.
No, I agree. She pointed out that she wasn't sure if she had been formally appointed at, during elections.
So, yeah, nope.
And I said, I thought we talked, we had talked about her.
We talked about it, and I didn't have her on the agenda, right?
Yep, no, great job.
Well, the semi-quinsentennial is Kevin Smith has now put it in the FinCom book, so I said, oh, thanks. Now you're going to make us all have to say that word. Semi-quinsentennial is what the 250th is.
So hearing no other questions, um, uh, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to appoint Sandra Gibson Quigley to the 250th Anniversary Committee.
A second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor? Next up, action item G, consideration and possible action to accept a $5,000 donation from Robert Benaric for the senior center. That's an extremely generous donation.
Well, I would say so.
Yeah. We will send a thank you note.
Yeah, absolutely.
Did he give any indication of like what he would like to have done with that?
I am not sure.
I know it says at the discretion, but.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I don't think so.
Is he a resident of Sturbridge?
I don't know anything about him. Did Leslie give you any more on that than just?
I didn't know if he like regularly attends.
Just a memo, yeah. I, I, it's just such a generous gift.
Yeah, really.
I don't know if he had a family member maybe who attended.
Right. I just wondered about the background that led to it. It's a hundred dollars, although even a hundred dollars wouldn't be refused.
Yeah, but it's a substantial donation.
Yeah, that's very generous. Um, yeah, do we have a motion to approve action item G?
I'll make a motion to accept a $5,000 donation from Robert Benaric. Benaric. For the senior center.
Second.
Do you have a motion, a second? All those in favor? And yes, please, a nice thank you letter.
Oh, yes. I'll say thank you for $5,000. We, but we do, seriously, appreciate, yeah, because sometimes the people who give 25 don't have a lot of money. This is, we do, we do appreciate.
Everything, that, that.
But this is very generous.
Yes.
It's all relative.
Yep, it is. Action item H, consideration and possible action to the acceptance, acceptance of a donation to the fire department of a used Sony television set valued at $125.
Never say no to a TV.
Nope, yeah, no.
Is it going in the break room or what are they going to do with that?
I do not know. I'm presuming, I don't know. Do you know where it is? Have you heard scuttle where it's going?
My guess is the officer's room, but. I'm not sure. I haven't heard anything.
I haven't heard where it's going.
That loses goodness, right?
That's right.
Will I get a complaint? I'm not worried.
That's right. So do we have a motion to approve action item H?
I'll make a motion to accept a donation to the fire department of the used Sony television set valued at $125.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll make the second. And all those in favor? Next up, old business. Mary, the.
I have none.
Mary, yeah.
Um, yeah, hold on. I just, one was new. Oh, I know what the old is. So what is going to be our progress on the green space, getting some landscaping around the Welcome to Sturbridge site?
Oh, I just, I just, um.
I know that we do have Babs lawn here.
Yep, I talked to them this week. They're getting ready to go. They were just waiting for the weather to break.
Okay.
Yeah, just weather. Yeah, you're good. Yep, yep.
Okay.
And that's going to be there. And in front of the DPW entrance, there'll be something, and I think maybe something further up here too. So it's about $25,000 worth of landscaping, trees, greenery.
Finance through our ARPA.
ARPA. This is ARPA. Yep.
Good.
Yep, looking forward to seeing. And I want to thank Joe Cohen. He's, uh, getting a very small sum for the engineering and taking the lead on working with Babes, but it's a minimal amount. Uh, I think we have a $2,500 agreement with him for all the work he's done. But I really want to thank him for being such a good partner and getting a lot of this stuff done. He's active on our Cedar Street project. He's just a great asset for us. Very helpful.
And I have no old, um, new business. Mary?
Nothing here.
I just have one that we can discuss maybe with the fuller board, but I got a, um, email from a friend, an acquaintance from three swimmers. They're hoping, and I'd like to read the, the letter into the docket. They're hoping that there's more accessibility for that pool than what is currently offered. Um, and let me just read you what they say, and then I'll tell you what the hours are. It says, um, I hope this note finds you well. Currently, as I understand it, the pool is only available on weekends for lap swimming and community use, and only two hours in total for lap swimming. It's one hour on Saturday mornings and one hour on Sunday. I hope that the district will consider further community open hours, either early mornings or evenings after school during predictable hours throughout the year. As I believe you might recall, and certainly the notes from long ago town meetings will confirm, when the new school was voted on, assurances were given to the community that the pool would be in, would be in fact a recreational asset available for all. There is a growing community of local swimmers who would very much like to see this happen, and we hope that you will support our efforts to see that it does. And it's three swimmers. Um, I did inquire, just so that the board knows, um, when exactly it's open. So currently, for lap swimming, it's nine to 10 on Saturday and nine to 10 in the morning on Sunday. Nothing during the week, nothing at night when school hours, when school functions aren't going on. It is more generous for, um, open swim, family swim, which is 10 to 12 and five to seven. Um, the swimming, you know, the people who want to swim laps like you're at a Y would like lanes, you know, because it's great that it is open more to, to families, but they're hoping that we might, and I know it's not within our jurisdiction, but we might reach out to school administration or the school committee and say, what about some evening hours for lap swimming? Or even like, you know, eight to 10 or, um, to just be more generous for lap swimming and really for community swimming for, for families. Because, um, if nothing is going on, um, during the year, during the evening hours, and I know, I guess, I can't speak for the school committee, but I know, um, it is attended to by a, a lifeguard.
Yes.
And I don't know if it's in their budget for more, but I do recall I was on that. There was a lot of pushback about getting pool. I'm glad we got a pool, don't get me wrong. But people thinking, oh, wow, you know, now we have a pool. And part of the sale on it was, well, it's going to be community. So I don't know.
I'm happy to ask. I, this has come up. I have heard the, the same request. Annie, I know, worked very hard to try to get some more hours even for the, uh, the courts for volleyball, for some of the leagues. It's been challenging to get use. And that was, I also believe, part of the agreements early on was that there would be public access to those facilities. I will ask again.
Yeah.
I thought all I could do, but I will.
I know, yeah. And some evenings, you know, evening swim.
Yeah, I mean, and schools open more often than not.
The size of the budget.
People in there, yeah.
I mean, I think they could get lifeguards, high school students wanting some extra money or something. And so related, I have one more.
I, yeah.
Okay. Only on board with you, but coming within a couple of weeks of each other, I also had somebody reach out with respect to the track, because the track is always locked. And I know, like, I really like to run a track, but occasionally when I do, I end up going to Woodstock on 169 because they, it's not too far and their, their track's open all the time.
Pretty. It's nice out there.
It's nice. It's pretty. But I, I, I think a lot of people, and they don't, you know, they're not allowed to jump a fence, which I get, but if, if there's not a school function going on, um, maybe that, the track should be open too.
One million percent.
Okay, so.
Deals to track, the pool.
Yeah.
Would you, would you all like, rather than, I'm happy to have it come from me. I don't mind by any stretch. Would you rather that this be a letter from the board? Would you like to, because you can.
I would absolutely.
You could take a vote now to have me draft a letter on behalf of the board.
It is.
I can sign it and say, the board has asked me to, I mean, I can.
Or give it to all of our.
You can all sign.
And, and you know, Robin, I would, I would like to draft, do the letter, but I would also even like to take it a little step further, invite some of our local Sturbridge School Committee members of Tiantasqua to have a little discussion and understand what the community is feeling towards these facilities.
Got it.
So they could go report.
Yep.
To their school committee.
Lovely.
And because it is a problem that.
So why don't I address this to the Tiantasqua School Committee from the board versus me to Deb?
Absolutely.
Superintendent to town administrator.
And then I think what Chase is saying is our representatives to invite.
And have your Sturbridge representatives on Tiantasqua.
And maybe they're just not resistant to it. They just haven't given it any real thought, you know what I mean?
Yes.
But I, yeah, that would be nice.
Yeah.
The pool, for the, for the track, for.
I'm happy to do it.
Yes.
And I did inquire of some friends who live in other communities, and, you know, every layout is different. So, you know, I get that. But, um, their tracks are not closed.
I agree. My experience has been, and I, I did run into this, uh, Stoughton, when they put their new school in, which just went in like two years ago, three, well, four years, just before I left, when I got there, maybe six years ago. Time flies. But there was the same discussion because the tennis courts were supposed to be open to the public and they were locking them after school hours. And we had the same battle. The public says, you know what? We voted for this school. We spent however many million. We have this dead exclusion, and all we asked for is that we could use the tennis courts. And they were locked. And so we were, but same battle there. But I do know in a lot of communities, even where I grew up, the, the nice track with, one of the middle schools was open to the public all the time, Saturdays, Sundays nights. The tracks were open. You know, tennis courts, the argument was, well, if they get damaged, whatever else. But the track is not going to get damaged. I mean, there's really.
It's going to take a lot of running.
The pool is not going to get damaged. The track is not going to get damaged. Gym floor is a little different maybe, but.
But you have them to use them.
But that's, yeah.
They're not going to be on the gym floor with cleats on.
No.
Exactly, yes.
So I am happy to draft that one.
Yes, but that would be great.
All right, super. I don't have any other business.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thank, I have three avid swimming, you know, acquaintances that I, and this person wrote me the letter a couple of weeks ago, and shame on me. I meant to bring it up at our last meeting, but I must have had my own election on my mind or something. I don't know.
You've got a lot going on.
So, yeah, but anyway. Right, excellent.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion from us on the letter?
I can, so because I'm drafting for you to, something to sign, so there probably should be a motion to draft that.
I will make a motion for our town administrator to draft a letter to the Sturbridge representative of the Tiantasqua School Committee about facility usage.
Second.
Perfect.
All those in favor?
Got it. Okay.
Right. Next up, I have no new business on myself, so we can jump to.
Let me just, um, one just quick reminder again, if I can just remind everybody, town meeting, April 28th.
Yes.
At the school. Uh, we do not have a board meeting ahead of it. It used to be that it, because it was the first Monday of June, we always had a board meeting ahead. So there's no pre-meeting unless you all think we need one, and if so, I have to put the notice out like yesterday. But, um, I don't, I don't have anything I have to have you vote on ahead of time. Um, we are prepared. Jackie and Steve will be handling it for us in Bruce's absence. I do have an update on Bruce and I, I can share. His, his partner has indicated that I can share. He had a major setback last Friday, um, but he has rebounded from that setback and is now back into recovery mode. He did end up back in the ICU. Um, they're hoping to get him back into a rehab center soon. So we continue to pray for Bruce's well-being.
Yes.
Thank you.
Best wishes to.
And she's been wonderful. I get updates from Deb like every three or four days. And we'll do whatever we can as a town, he, you know, with his time and to make sure he's kept hold.
Best wishes from, from the board.
Yes, and prayers.
Correspondence? Correspondence?
Okay, we've got one, so I shared some correspondence on pool usage. The other thing, we've got, received something from Reverend John Lucy from the Charlton City United Methodist Church. I'll just read a little bit of it. It's wanting a commitment for us to try to be more green, basically. Dear Select Board Members, as people of God, we give thanks for the creation given to us, and also honor the duty we have to maintain and sustain our home. So they're requesting that we take any and all conceivable and feasible action to reduce the town's greenhouse emissions, at the least to engage a thoroughly, a thorough energy audit, research and implement it, research and strongly consider investing in solar panels for town properties, including the schools and town hall, research and strongly consider investing in electric school buses, and to remind parents and other visitors of town, school, and properties to turn off their cars. Consider a town-wide ban on the sale of NIPS. I mean, just highlighting that. I think I'm the one, was it here that I mentioned how many NIPS? Yes, last meeting that I'm finding on Route 15, yeah. And significantly increase the Earth Day Committee's budget to enable them to host a yearly presentation from recognized activists on the need for climate action and steps to reduce the environmental impact. So.
Well, we are a green communities, which means we've had a lot of energy audits and whatnot, so.
We have done the energy audits.
I believe we have, I think it's part of being a green community. When you first signed on, there would have been that, and we continue to utilize, we just got a green communities grant for several hundred thousand dollars to continue with our upgrades and whatnot.
Do you know how many towns at this point have electric school buses? Does anybody know?
I do not know.
Because I know they're going to order the DPW vehicles to be.
Well, that mandate got rolled back, by the way. So the state did roll back the mandate because.
No longer 26?
No, because there's no infrastructure to charge them, and there's nowhere to buy them right now, and they're not even really in existence, the proper ones, to do the job.
Those are some good reasons.
Yeah, that's some good reasons. I think they finally realized that their own DOT wouldn't be able to plow highways, and that became like painfully obvious. As far as school buses, I don't know how many towns have. I can tell you WRTA has bought a few electric buses. They are very guarded in their purchase of electric buses. They have to store them all outside. They don't feel it's safe to store them inside. They have them. They have some concerns. I actually had an interesting concern from a resident when I sat on a WRTA meeting about how quiet they are when they pull up, and that there's actually a danger for people standing at bus stops because they don't hear the bus coming, which I never even, I never gave a thought to. The silence of them is actually a concern for some people. So they're, they're watching them. They're watching, you know, how long the charge is. What if the bus gets caught in significant amounts of traffic? And then those buses have to come in and have like an overnight charge. So the charging is really the issue. The charging stations on, like, if you've got school buses, we would have to have massive numbers of charging stations to do that. And, yeah, and also remember, a lot of communities do not own their own school buses. So it's Daco or First Student. So we are one of very few communities who actually own a bus fleet. So I just, I honestly don't know how many of those communities have moved that direction. I can tell you that, you know, there might be some, you know, we could have people who might be willing to come in and put those chargers in a private entity, which is typically how you would do it, because we do not want to be in the charging business, even if we had to pay and give back or sell back or whatever. It becomes complicated on where the funding would be for that, and how much would it offset on the cost of charging and the cost of electricity versus the cost of the gasoline or the diesel.
No, no, I get it. There's a lot of complications. I just didn't know if any, any towns actually took that step.
And it's just so few towns actually run their own bus systems.
And then my other question is, just out of curiosity, consider a town-wide ban on the sale of NIPS. I know we're in control of the amount of liquor licenses. Can you control that by ballot with the content of what is sold?
And I think the ABCC has jurisdiction over that. They might want to look at a statewide discussion on that.
And I, yeah, I read that, and I was like, I don't even know if that's our control.
Yeah, I think we, we might get a lot of pushback, but I can find out. It's an interesting question.
I was just curious. When I read that, I'm like, I don't think that's within our.
I don't think it is.
Jurisdiction, but I didn't know. But maybe, I mean, he took a long time to draft this.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer the question, yeah.
And just let them know that we have done energy audits and that type of thing, and we're a green community, but, you know, because it's a rather long, well-thought-out letter, so maybe just to.
Most communities are governed, for instance, on when a project's over a million dollars and change or whatever, that we're, you know, and do we fall into new stretch codes. And so our library HVAC is all electric, for example.
Right.
So.
Yeah, so just maybe just give them a quick note that we, we're trying to be green.
Yep.
You know, I don't think we have anything else.
And in fact, I know even when we did the purchase of our electricity, the town went for the more green option.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for the correspondence. Next up, approval of minutes, March 31, 2025.
Okay, I think we can do it, right?
We have to table that.
No, we're too out of, we're too out of.
Just like the liquor olives, the hand.
It's a majority of the quorum.
Okay.
So.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of March 31, 2025.
I'll second.
All those in favor? 2-0-1. Thank you. Next up, April 7, 2025.
I read through these. I have no issue with it.
I have none. Mary, do you have any?
I don't. I just want to say, Francis, these are really well-prepared, well, are doing a really good job with our minutes. I just wanted to thank you. They're just, they're, concur. Yeah, they're not too short. You know, they're, they're not just the motions, but yet it's not a verbatim of what we discussed. It's kind of a nice balance.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I agree.
We have a motion for April 7, 2025.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for April 7, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor? 3-0. And motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, you made it.
Yep.
Yeah, you seconded. I'm just waiting for you to.
All those in favor?
Amazing, Chase.
Yeah, nice. Get it out.